按照我们的惯例，我们开始每周会议都会唱我们的国家 anthem。我请求大家站起来，跟随学生们的指引。请到 podium 上来。鲍勃·埃德沃顿学校的 trustee Dennis and Vukadinovich 作为鲍勃·埃德沃顿学校的 trustee， 梅兰海特学校和华盛顿大学的学校， trustee Dennis，继续。
早上好，尊敬的主席， 在这里，我们在会议室中与我们一起分享。谢谢。
trustee Vukadinovich？
是的，我回应 trustee Dennis 的发言。她说得如此好。谢谢，Janessa， 还有其他的孩子们，
代表我们的股东群，我想认识一下Clay Gordon， 来自 Canadian Union of Public Employees，Local 40。女士，您有什么需要被注意到的改变吗？
女士，主席， 接下来的变更日程请求已经收到，
谢谢 trustee Vukadinovich。赞成的， 这样一致执行。下一个业务是 results focus。今天我们有鲍勃·埃德沃顿学校的演示， 梅兰海特学校和华盛顿大学的学校。Director Poiret，你能介绍一下你的演示吗？
主席， trustee， yes。
谢谢，Director Poiret。Merci。Bonjour。作为双学科学校， 梅兰海特学校， 他们以成长心态引导着前行， 不断努力提高自己， 积累必备的生活技能， 为他们的成功铺路。无论是英语还是法语课程， 通过他们的不懈努力， 有信心和专业。作为主任， 我对老师带来的热情和 expertise 是非常感激的。在学习过程中， 学生在学习各个方面都具备了毅力和 perseverance。以便更深地了解自己， 然后通过学习技巧取得成功。我想让我的同事Alexandros Fotopoulos，鲍勃·埃德沃顿学校的主任，
Bonjour， 我是Alex Fotopoulos， 我是鲍勃·埃德沃顿学校的主任。鲍勃·埃德沃顿学校是一个双学科中学， 旨在辅导超过500名学生，从六年级到九年。通过当前最好的实践和研究学习。我们的全面学校健康体系鼓励学生健康生活， 通过健康的生活和积极的精神健康。此外，我们利用数字技术， 为个人学习提供 personalized learning， 促进技术熟练度。学生在六至九年级的课程中 embody 勇气，成长和尊重。学生学习进步， 有 determination 和 resilience， 如同鹰队精神所映衬。加入我们，庆祝我们的 learners 的成就，
好的，谢谢。感谢您今天欢迎我们。作为学生， 我们来这里代表我们的从 elementary 学校到鲍勃·埃德沃顿学校，
我们的中学之旅是一个充满意外的 roller coaster ride， 充满了 unexpected twists and turns。学习变得动态和 sometimes messy， 面临着挑战和 setbacks。面对困难， 并且带着学习新语言的能力， 伴随着常规 curriculum， 以宽容和 resilience 老实。激情，毅力和 perseverance。这些品质定义我们， 在我们周围显赫， 无论是在哪个项目中。我们学会与 setbacks 一起面对， 以 resilience 和理解错误是学习过程的一部分。比如测量和体积时， 我可以回家做我的学习， 和我的家人一起制作我喜欢的 pasta 或 macaron。当我们进入高中， 反思个人经历， 这就像在一个大 think tank 中， 同时接受他人意见， 在寻找 collaborative learning 的途中。这个旅程需要 persistence 和 adaptability，
今天，我作为第二语言的学习者， 同时学习这个新语言。除了英语和法语， 许多学生还会说其他语言， 使语言多样性更常见。在我法语入门期间， 我实现了许多 milestone，
这是肯定的。更多东西存在。我们像专家一样， 能够处理新的事情， 开放对待不同的观点， 这就像快速课程，
在六至九年级的过程中， 我们学生共同学习方法， 由好奇心和 determination 影响。我们克服困难和 setbacks， 在不确定时刻遇到， 尤其是当我深入学习新领域， 比如语言。这些经历教会我如何应对 ambiguity， 通过寻求 clarity，打破复杂概念， 得出结论，基于已知知识， 寻求教师的指导。正如我们探索多种社区和文化的同时， 我们认识到面对 ambiguous 困难和考虑多个视角， 在学习途中做出正确的决策。同时也增强了我对所有领域的信心， 例如，我很高兴被 Western Canada High School 北部大学的国际白龙队学院录取， 感谢我在法语入门中获得的技能， 比如 critical thinking 技能和应用策略实现成功， 尤其是在 mathematics。证明了通过这些挑战， 我个人， 特别是我的老师， 在我的一天中，
通过公共教育。在公共教育中参与， 让我们交换想法， 设置个人学习目标。
并且接近毕业， 以及我们的未来职业。我们经过了这么多技能， 现在我想邀请 principal Whitbread 从 Western Canada High School 到 podium 上。
Bonjour， 早上好。我的名字是 Darren Whitbread， 我很自豪成为 Western Canada High School 的主任， 一个拥有超过2,200名学生， 有 regular IB 和语言编程。在我的经验中， 作为四个不同的 CBE 学校的主任， 三个有法语入门编程， 虽然法语入门提供宝贵的福利， 但必须认识到， 我们的职责是提供多种机会， 比如语言编程， 来支持我们学生多种需求。虽然法语入门改变了高中的学生， 即将听到的， 保持整体视角至关重要。在 Western Canada， 我们庆祝所有学生取得的成绩， 无论是法语入门还是其他 pursuits。我们的社区重视多样性， 我现在想邀请我们12年级的学生 Krish 和 Nada， 讲述他们多年来法语入门教育对他们的 commitment 和 appreciation， 以及他们 ongoing 和未来学习经历的影响。Krish。
你好，大家。通过学习法语， 我不只是提高了现场思维， 而且扩大了我的英语和法语 vocabulary。我的大脑帮助我读懂文本含义， 提升我对语言处理技能。将在我的未来工作中尤为重要， 能够在官方语言中精通， 还让我接触到多种视角， 以及它提升了我的自尊， 当我临近法语入门课程的完成， 现在，我们有 Nada Shaikh， 一个法语 IB 学生， 来讲述她的经历。Nada。
谢谢 Krish， 大家好。作为摩洛哥人， 我从很小就开始学习法语， 她希望我分享这段经历。起初我犹豫不决， 因为我已经很难学习阿拉伯语和 Urdu。通过法语入门， 此外，我的决定继续， 与同学建立 meaningful 友谊， 谁分享我对语言学习的热情， 这是长达超过十年的友谊， 丰富了我的生活，在 countless 个方面。我通过我的 schooling， 不仅加深我对母亲的联系， 而且也拓宽了文化视野， 和对多样性充满自豪。
感谢主任 Korpela Fotopoulos 和 Whitbread， Merci。Au revoir。
trustee Dennis and Vukadinovich， trustee Dennis。
谢谢主席。并听他们学习的情况。我想感谢您， 不仅感谢土地认可， 而且感谢今天的演示。您自己如此 eloquently 管理， 如此自信地讲话。如果您看到我低头， 因为我在疯狂地输入， 您今天在地板上扔金桔。即使今天的会议还没有开始， 我知道这是我的会议中最喜欢的环节， 我说得对。作为 trustees， 我们读大量的报告， 学习复杂。你说得对。一个旅程， 我们面对挑战和 setbacks。只是一个小玩笑， 当我去拜访学校， 被班主任邀请去拜访学校， 我总是说， 不要为我打扫学校。我不是母亲。学习复杂。所以，如果看起来复杂， 没关系， 因为我们知道学习复杂。然而，我们仍然可以学习， 并且以宽容、毅力和 perseverance 为榜样。尝试新的事物， 理解和他人， 让我们变得更美好。还有主任 Korpela Fotopoulos 和 Whitbread， 还有 Director Poiret， 今天的演示。这是我今天从您身上学到的。谢谢。
trustee Vukadinovich？
谢谢，主席。谢谢， 和 merci beaucoup， 给主任 Darren Whitbread， Western Canada High School 的主任， 学生 Krish，Janessa 和 Nada。我是法国入境学生的一员， 半世纪以前， 法语入境只在 Saint Lambert， Quebec 的少数教室开放。今天， 而父母的需求还在增长。Nada， 我特别能理解您的演示。作为我自己新人， 因为我小时候移民到这里， 我知道新人到加拿大 事实上，2021年 census 显示， 法语入门项目中的孩子可能属于第二代的 Canadians， 是一个 visible minority 组织。在加拿大， 法语入境很受欢迎， statistics 显示， 他们的孩子出生在加拿大， 和母亲使用的非官方语言的孩子， 而不是 majority community 的青少年。如果不是更多。和 Krish 和 Janessa， 您也是学习法语作为第二语言的价值的 testament， learners 可以无代价地增加第一语言能力， 还可以增加数学、biology、chemistry、physics。我相信有一个加拿大， 每个人都能在官方语言中双语。我相信官方语言的双语化， 会建立一个更强的加拿大。所以谢谢。Joyeux anniversaire et meilleure souhait pour les prochaines cinquante années。50年 anniversary， 我期待接下来的 50 年。
非常感谢。我们将在五分钟的休息中结束。Okay, we'll reconvene our meeting. Next on our agenda is item 7.1, Construction Project Status Update. Trustee Invogedenovic, I understand you have some questions on this report. Go ahead.
Thank you Chair Hack. So I note that the CBE is running out of space for students. We are full now and we urgently need new schools built in communities across our growing city. This is why I take a keen interest in the construction update report. On page two of eight of this report, I see that the Evanston Middle School still has not broken ground over two years after the provincial government announced full funding for it in March 2022. I appreciate that there is a time lag from the provincial government announcement and then provincial government follow-up with next steps, such as providing the actual funding. I also realize that following proper procurement and permitting processes takes time. I see that construction is projected to commence mid-spring, contingent on receipt of permits from the city of Calgary. My question is, what additional information can staff provide me about the current stage of the project? What are these permits we're waiting for? Is there anything trustees can do to advocate for expediting them? And given that today is April 23rd, we should be getting awfully close to shovels in the ground. So I'm wondering, do we have an estimated date for shovels in the ground?
Through the chair. At the risk of having to then manage expectations, cautiously optimistic that by next Monday, we'll start seeing dirt being moved around on that site and work starting. So we are currently waiting for the development permit and the building permit from the city. Those permits are sort of a dialogue, if you want. The city establishes requirements that any developer must meet. And then between the general contractor and the city, there's that dialogue that occurs in terms of the contractor showing, demonstrating to the city how they believe they can meet the requirements that are laid out by the city. And then the city might look at that and say, "Oh, well, you need to adjust here. You need to adjust here." But that process has been going on for a little while now and really optimistic that we will be receiving those permits imminently and that you will be seeing work happening on that site.
Thank you. Go ahead, Trustee Invogedenovic.
Thank you. My last question. On page three of eight, I see that we are awaiting confirmation from Alberta Infrastructure on next steps for the new elementary school in Evanston, also in Evanston, as well as for the various other new school build projects and major modernization, partial funding projects that have received limited planning or design dollars. I note that last year, the CBE had 3,900 kids in Calgary waiting for the provincial government to approve a local school in their neighborhood. But instead of 3,900 student spaces, the CBE received approval for only 600 student spaces. So we're getting full construction funding for only one of the new schools that were on our capital planning last priorities last year and only one new school per year does not cut it for Calgarians. This year, due to a combination of unmet need from last year, combined with our continued strong enrollment growth, the CBE is requesting full funding for 11,400 student spaces, comprised of 13 new school requests across Calgary plus one major modernization request. I'm worried that the current provincial government is falling further and further behind on building new schools for Calgarians, even though Calgarians are hard-working people who are paying their fair share of taxes and who expect schools to be built in their neighborhoods. Speed of delivery is critical and I would like to see the government of Alberta demonstrate greater agility in responding to the growth pressures in Calgary's public education system. I'm worried that the provincial government is distracted by unnecessary side projects like pension plans and provincial police forces and the February 1st announcements designed to increase the number of forms that parents have to fill out throughout the school year. And all of this detracts from the main focus we need from the provincial government, which is simply to figure out how to approve full funding for 11,400 student spaces in the next few months and to figure out how to get shovels in the ground as fast as possible on all 11,400 student spaces. So when it comes to the elementary school in Evanston, what can you tell me about the confirmation of next steps that the CBE is waiting for from the provincial government?
Through the chair. After an announcement, it typically takes several months before we hear then from Alberta Education Administration in regards to things like the assignment of a project management team to the project. And in fact, just last week, we did hear from them on the fact that they haven't yet determined what delivery model will be used. And by that, I mean, will it be a P3 model, a public-private partnership for the development of this school and potentially others that they have announced across the province? Or will it be a design bid, build, build, bid, build? So certainly there are different methodologies that can take some time as they go through and identify what way we'll deliver the school or schools, essentially getting the best bang for the dollars that they're investing, while also, of course, keeping in mind the need to keep these projects moving along rapidly. I'm certain that that's front and foremost in their heads as well because we keep reminding them of the dire need for additional space.
Any other questions? Next on our agenda is the annual monitoring of results for personal development. At the April 9th, 2024 Public Board Meeting, trustees had the opportunity to ask questions regarding the report. The report is now on the agenda for the board to consider whether the chief superintendent is making reasonable progress with provisions of results for personal development. The board has previously approved the reasonable interpretations and indicators of this results policy, which has set the stage for effective monitoring of actual organizational performance. I'd like to remind trustees that today, our job is to determine whether or not the report provides sufficient evidence that the CBE has made reasonable progress towards achieving this result and to build the portfolio of the chief superintendent's performance in the results half of the chief superintendent's job expectations. I'd ask trustee to bring forward a motion regarding this report. Trustee Invogedenovic?
Okay. I move that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the monitoring report for results for personal development and concludes that reasonable progress is being made toward the ultimate achievement of this results policy.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the monitoring report for results for personal development and concludes that reasonable progress is being made towards the ultimate achievement of this results policy. Trustee Invogedenovic, would you please open debate?
Thank you. This 60-page report is based on board-approved indicators and as such, this report meets the standard of reporting on progress using these board-approved indicators to measure the CBE's success in helping each student to identify and actively develop their individual gifts, talents and interests. So I urge my fellow trustees to vote in favor of this report.
Trustees for round one of debate? As you're gathering your thoughts, I'll enter here. I do want to say that I support this motion, that we are making reasonable progress. There were a number of things listed at the last meeting that were of celebratory nature, including the increases in physical and emotional health, an increase in persistence. We saw the returning rate gap narrowing and all of our report card results are still extremely high. Hearing from the student presentations today again reinforces that staff is setting students up for success and that students are doing all right. They are achieving in the area of personal development and this is one that's such an important skill, not just for in-school, but for life in general. So I'm enthusiastically in support of the motion that we're making reasonable progress here today. Jessie Bolger, go ahead.
Thank you Chair Hack. So this year, several of us trustees were fortunate to attend the CBE's first-ever well-being symposium and it was an incredible event, bringing together students from all of our high schools. And as trustees, we've also had the opportunity to attend the chief superintendent's student advisory council meetings that are held regularly throughout the school year. So seeing these strategies for results for inaction demonstrate that we are focusing on student well-being and supporting the personal development of our students and happy to support this motion.
Trustees for round one? Any trustee will move to round two now? Any trustee wishing to enter or re-enter debate? Trustee Invogedenovic, do you wish to close?
I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
With that, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Our next item of business is item 8.2, Proposed Amendments to Governance Culture Policies. This report is for the board to consider revisions to Governance Culture Policy II, Governing Commitments, its Board Meeting Procedures NGC 5E, Board Governance Committee's Terms of Reference. As required in legislation, the board, with the support of the Board Governance Committee, regularly reviews its results policies procedures. These policies have been reviewed and areas of improvement were identified. The proposed amendments are in front of the board today for consideration. Do trustees have any questions or comments on the report? Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee May?
The proposal, sorry, that the Board of Trustees gives first reading to the Amendments to Governance Culture II, Governing Commitments Policy, as provided in Attachment 1 to this report.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees gives first reading to the Amendments to Governance Culture II, Governing Commitments Policy, as provided in Attachment 1 to this report. Trustee May, would you please open debate?
Thank you Chair Hack. So the proposed amendments to GC2 are in the spirit of continuous improvement. By regular monitoring and evaluating the effectiveness of our policies and regularly debriefing meetings, we can continue with good governance and ensure our emphasis and our focus as a board is on the results of our students.
Trustees wishing to enter for round one of debate? Trustees for round two? Anyone wishing to enter or re-enter? Trustee made you wish to close.
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Are there any additional motions regarding this report? Trustee May?
That the Board of Trustees gives second reading and thereby final approval to the Amendments to Governance Culture II, Governing Commitments Policy, as provided in Attachment 1 to this report.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees gives second reading and thereby final approval to the Amendments to Governance Culture II, Governing Commitments Policy, as provided in the Attachment 1 to this report. Trustee May, would you like to open debate?
Not too much to add to this, but I think because they are just such small amendments, but worthwhile that we're to work on, that voting in favor today for second reading can get us started right away instead of coming back to another board meeting.
Trustees for round one of debate? Trustee close? Go ahead.
It is minor, but so effective. And I just wanted to thank trustee May for leading us through debrief with some really great questions and bringing us to a place where we can talk about how we can focus on continuous improvement. So thank you. I think really worthwhile changes to our governance policy.
Trustees for round one? Trustees for round two? Trustee made you wish to close?
Nothing further. Thank you.
With that, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Are there any further motions regarding this report? Jessie Bolger, go ahead.
Thank you. That the Board of Trustees gives first reading to the Amendments to Board Meeting Procedures Policy, as provided in Attachment 2 to this report.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? Trustee Invogedenovic?
I have a question about the content of the changes to the board meeting procedures. Is it better to ask it now or during the next phase? During debate?
Okay, if it's about the motion?
Okay. So one of my questions, there is, I have a few questions. One is in the section on debrief, you can find that on page 13 of the Board Meeting Procedures, which is 18 of 49, for those looking at it online. And we see this language repeated again in Appendix 1 to the Board Meeting Procedures, which is page 48 of 49, again for those following along using the 49-page version of this report. which is page forty-eight of forty-nine, again, for those following along using the forty-nine page version of this report. So I can understand one of the proposed changes. I can understand how debrief supports continuous improvement. In fact, I would actually end this sentence right there. However, I don't understand the rest. For example, how does debrief ensure that trustees have the knowledge and skills necessary for effective governance?
Trustee May, go ahead.
Thanks for the question. So I think what it comes down to is the fact that how our focus with all of our GCs and our policies is that we're looking for continuous improvement. So within debrief, just to make sure that we're debriefing our meetings, looking forward together, talking about professional development, we're talking about how we can work together, talking about, you know, making sure that if we, if we need a consultant, if there's a new board coming in, that we're, we're spending the money to do so and just making sure that everyone's kind of on the same mindset to make sure that we're working on results focus. So the changes here, just to be a bit more specific to what a debrief is, instead of just a generality that we will do a debrief, just so that we kind of are on level set.
Trustee Bukadinevich?
It sounds then like it's, it's not to ensure that trustees have the knowledge and skills necessary for effective governance, but rather to provide an opportunity to discuss it.
So you had questions about the motion? Right now, you're entering into debate.
All right, my second, may I then, I'll give, go to my second question?
Go ahead.
How does debrief ensure that trustees have the budget support necessary for effective governance?
Trustee May?
Again, so it would not necessarily be a set line item for every year to spend, but just to have the conversation and to have the awareness that there is, if a board needs help or if a board wants to look at a facilitator or someone to help, that we can work together to ensure we are doing our duties under the other roles and responsibilities. So just another piece to play and just highlights the importance of us regularly monitoring and looking for our own improvements.
Any other questions about the motion? Okay, the motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees gives first reading to the amendments to the Board Meeting Procedures Policy as provided in Attachment two to this report. Trustee Bolger, would you please open debate?
Thank you. So the proposed amendment in Attachment two of the Board Meeting Procedures Policy is specific to conducting business at Board of Trustees meetings, specifically debrief. Wording has been adjusted to further support the regular debriefing of Board of Trustees meetings with the goal of continuous improvement, improvement and ensuring that members of the board are equipped with the knowledge, skills, and budget support necessary for effective governance.
Trustees for round one of debate? Trustee Bukadinevich?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the considerable work that the Board Governance Committee put into this, into tightening up this procedures policy. I urge my fellow trustees to vote against it, and that is what I plan to do. I don't see how debrief can ensure that trustees have the knowledge and skills necessary for effective governance. It can certainly provide an opportunity to talk about opportunities for improvement, but there's no sort of magical fairy dust where you take a trustee who doesn't have the knowledge and skills necessary for effective governance. And purely by engaging in a debrief, then they emerge from that debrief fully, fully immersed with the knowledge and skills that are necessary for effective governance. And in a similar line of thinking, debrief does not ensure that trustees have the budget support necessary for effective governance because there is no mechanism at debrief where budget decisions are, are made. And in fact, as we know from budgeting is that it's not always, the CBE doesn't always work with, we work with what we get. And so we don't always receive the budget that's necessary for every area, but we, we, we make hard decisions to work with the budget that we receive. So I'm also not convinced that purely by engaging in the process of debrief, which is indeed very important, that that will therefore ensure that trustees have the budget support necessary for effective governance. So I respectfully urge my fellow trustees to consider voting against this motion. I think that it, the procedures need to go back for just a little bit more, more tightening up and, and I'd like to see them come back to us again at a future date.
Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So I will be supporting the motion. I guess in recognition of a few things, over the last number of months, I have appreciated how our board has been intentional in terms of making debrief a valuable, meaningful, productive experience for all trustees, where we do have those opportunities, you know, to discuss our, our governance role and how it is that we're performing this exercise. Governance is not intuitive and we need to learn to be good governors. And, you know, I'm now, you know, seven years deep in this and I'm still learning things about governance and these debrief conversations, in particular, the way they're being modeled now for us. They are, they are effective and they do help us to continue to concentrate on good governance and also on student results, which is why we're here in the first place. If we are failing at good governance, we're failing at our job. Governance is the job. And so it is really important that the debrief conversations happen, but also as part of those conversations, we can identify together areas of learning, areas of improvement that will help each of us as individual trustees, but also as a board of the whole to become better governors and better equipped. So I especially appreciate the language about, I'm assuring that we have the knowledge, skills, and budget support necessary for effective governance as we grow in this role. Thank you.
Trustee May, go ahead.
I do enjoy the debate that happens with this, but I think, yes, policy is very specific and yes, we can never ensure, but it's, it's the spirit of it. It's the, we're going to be making time to talk about it. We're going to make time for the conversations. And that's how we can get those knowledge and skills. And so I think it is important to be a bit more specific than what was the general language because we do want the continuous improvement. We do want the good governance. We do want to make sure that we have the skills so that we can support and, and model for our students some good results.
Any other trustees for round one of debate? We'll move into round two. Those wishing to enter or re-enter for round two? Trustee Bukadinevich, go ahead.
When I was listening to the, the Chair of the Board Governance Committee, Chairman and, and trustee, Marilyn Dennis, talking about their reasons for voting in favor of the motion. In my opinion, they raised points that support why debrief is valuable. And I do agree that debrief is very valuable, but that didn't address my concerns for why these, the particular wording of these proposed amendments doesn't hit the mark. In particular, trustee Dennis says that she's voting in favor because it's important that we identify together areas of learning and areas of growth. That actually would be more accurate language to, to have here. So rather than ensuring that trustees have the knowledge and skills necessary for effective governance, debrief should help trustees identify areas of learning and areas of growth to help trustees have the knowledge and skills necessary for effective governance. And similarly, the item around budget support, again, we're not ensuring budget support. It, it would be an excellent opportunity to identify together areas where additional budget support would lead to more effective governance. So I again urge my trust, this is very close. I, I appreciate the fact that the idea is that we should, that the idea is to make the intent of debrief more specific, but I also don't want language in here that, that isn't accurately capturing the intent. I want the actual language that captures the intent. So I urge my trustees, fellow trustees to vote against this. I think it's very close. We can have a little bit more work done on this and then, and then have it come back to us at a future date.
Trustees for round two? As you contemplate, I'll, I'll enter here and with just a few words. I think bringing this forward and, and having this debate is, is good because this, when we put in policy, this is how we're deciding we want to debrief as a board. These are commitments that we're making in the how. So I appreciate the wording that was used for this because this is our commitment. So I will be voting in favor because I, I do agree that this is how we want to debrief. This is how we're going to debrief and putting it in policy and putting it in writing is really important to show our commitment to that and our commitment to governing. Any other trustees for round two? Trustee Bolger, do you wish to close?
Sure, and thank you. Appreciate the debate, trustee Bukadinevich. I think that obviously as trustees, we all want to improve in our practice. And as trustee Dennis said, governance is not intuitive. It does take a lot of work. So I think the conversation we have in debrief is very valuable. And I think the intention behind this is to support trustees collectively in our goal of continuous improvement. And even though the budget line item per se, you know, I don't know that that's addressed or would be specifically addressed in debrief, it certainly flags for us that it's something we need to look to if we need outside consultants or facilitators for any work we want to complete. So I'd ask my trustees to support the motion.
Okay, with that, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is trustee close, trustee Bolger, trustee Dennis, trustee Downey, trustee May, trustee Hack, those opposed? That is trustee Bukadinevich, that is carried. Are there any further motions regarding this report? Trustee Bolger?
That the Board of Trustees gives second reading and thereby final approval to the amendments to Board Meeting Procedures as provided in Attachment two to this report.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees gives second reading and thereby final approval to the amendments to the Board Meeting Procedures as provided in Attachment two to this report. Trustee Bolger, would you please open debate?
Thank you. I don't think of anything further to add from our last conversation.
Trustees wishing to enter for round one of debate? Trustee Bukadinevich?
I further encourage people to consider voting against this motion to send it back for further, send the procedures back to, for further work. I'm also concerned about transparency and what we owe to CalGarians. I'm concerned about even the hint that a budget discussion could be occurring in a debrief setting when it should be occurring at public meetings where everyone can see what's being debated as opposed to behind closed doors.
Trustees for round two? Trustee May?
Again, I don't think it's discussing a budget behind closed doors at all. It's about the intention that if we are seeing an area of improvement, we're seeing an area of focus that we'd like to work on for governance wise, that we have a preliminary discussion on how can we best be served. And so perhaps that's a budgetary external, perhaps that's some internal work for ourselves, perhaps that's, like, of course, there's just so many things I could do. And so we do still have our, you know, publicly available trustees budget. And so there is governance allocated to that. And so I, I don't think we're being unmindful of finances. I think we're all, we're well aware of where we're standing and that we make decisions based on where we're at and that every year could look differently, but that I wouldn't want to insinuate that we're making giant budgetary decisions behind closed doors because that's not what's happening.
Any other trustees for round one? Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I will be supporting second reading. Just in relation to the budget part of that conversation and the language that's been included in this amendment to this policy, the, or sorry, our board meeting procedures. It isn't a budget discussion. It is a discussion about what support does the board need in order to fulfill our fiduciary duty to the best of our ability in the service of CalGarians. And from time to time, it will mean that we may want to access the support and expertise of organizations or individuals outside of the organization in order to help with our own development in the role and our own fulfillment of the duty. And so the debrief conversation in relation to what may become part of the trustee's budget is important because we have an opportunity then to identify what support we might need and have that noted so that when we're having the budget discussion, which is public and transparent, that we are ensuring that we do have support within the trustee's budget to be able to access expertise from individuals or organizations outside of the CBE.
Trustees for round one? Trustees for round two, anybody wishing to enter or re-enter for round two? Trustee Bukadinevich?
Thank you. Once again, I, I note that trustee Dennis, just in speaking on the fly, has used language that I feel would have been more precise. What support does the board need to fulfill our fiduciary duty to CalGarians? That is an excellent phrase. That's a phrase I would have liked to see here to capture what we're trying to get through debrief. When it comes to policies and procedures, the language needs to be succinct and precise. And by succinct, it means that there should not be any additional words that are not necessary, that don't absolutely add to what has to be there. And precise, meaning that there shouldn't be multiple interpretations of the language. And I've heard multiple trustees say that they intend to vote in favor of this because they understand the intent behind the amendments. However, when it comes to a policy or procedure, the intent is not good enough. It's a great starting point, but once we understand the intent, which I do support, I do support the intent, it's then necessary, it's necessary to then get to language that precisely captures what the policy or procedure is intended to say. And that goes, and that goes no further than exactly what the policy or procedure is intended to say.
Trustees for round two? Trustee Bolger, do you wish to close?
I do. Thank you very much. And thanks for the conversation on this amendment to attachment two. I think broadly speaking, as noted before, that we want to improve. We want to make sure we have the resources that we're able to do so and improve our knowledge and our skills and what we're doing. And that we do, as trustee May mentioned, we do have a budget line item. Not that we'd be deciding it there, but it's, it's not something that it would be done in secret. Like Marilyn Dennis said, it would be in public, any discussion. So I'd urge my fellow trustees to support the second reading.
Okay, with that, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is trustee close, trustee Bolger, trustee Dennis, trustee Downey, trustee May, trustee Hack, those opposed? That is trustee Bukadinevich, that is carried. Are there any additional motions regarding this report? Trustee May?
That the Board of Trustees approves the amendments to GC five E, Board Governance Committee Terms of Reference as provided in Attachment three to this report.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the amendments to GC five E, Board Governance Committee Terms of Reference as provided in Attachment three to this report. Trustee May, would you please open debate?
Thank you. So the proposed changes to GC five E are in the roles and responsibilities section and again, our focus on debrief. So they're exactly mirroring the Board Meeting Procedure amendments in the last motion. I don't have too much more to add since I feel like we've had robust debate.
Trustees for round one? Trustees for round one? Trustees for round two, any trustees wishing to enter, re-enter for round two of debate? Trustee May, you wish to close?
Nothing further. Thank you.
With that, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Next on our agenda is item eight point three, trustee remuneration committee report. Trustee Downey, as chair of the trustee remuneration committee, would you please introduce the report?
Trustees, you see before you a very carefully considered report from the trustee remuneration committee outlining the remuneration recommendations for the 2024, 2025 year. The committee analyzed considerable compensation and benefits data of the CBE Board of Trustees and our peer group, which consists of Calgary Catholic School Board, Edmonton Catholic School Board, and Edmonton Public School Board. It is the opinion of the trustee remuneration committee that each recommendation made is reasonable and based on best industry practices of compensation. The recommendations are reasonable when isolated from one another, as well as when taken together as a whole.
Trustees, any questions or comments on the report? Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Jesse Downey?
That the Board of Trustees approves an increase to trustee honoraria effective September first, 2024 of uh, four point seven five percent or $2,217 based on the most recent three-year rolling average of Statistics Canada annual published Calgary consumer price. Pardon me, Calgary Consumer Index.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves an increase to trustee honoraria effective September first, 2024 of four point seven five percent or $2,217 based on the most recent three-year rolling average of Statistics Canada annual published Calgary Consumer Price Index. Trustee Dennis?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to propose an amendment to the motion on the floor to delete the four point seven five percent and replace it with three percent and delete the $2,217 and replace it with $1,402.
Do trustees have any questions about the proposed amendments? Trustee Vukadinevich?
Yes, based on what I'm hearing from trustee Dennis, if those two changes were made, then it would no longer be the most recent three-year rolling average of Statistics Canada annual published Consumer Price Index. So then, in that case, the motion in order to be accurate would also have to delete the phrase that it's based on the most recent three-year rolling average of Statistics Canada annual published Consumer Price Index.
Trustee Dennis?
Uh, thank you. Um, so I can speak to that. The, the motion would still say based on, um, we are not saying um, matched to or identical to, we are saying based on. Based on provides us with an opportunity of a range rather than, um, you know, matched identically to.
Any other questions? Jesse Vukadinevich?
I, I don't understand how that can be. I thought it was supposed to be an anchor where it provides an anchor for what percentage to use, and that is the anchor. I'm not clear how based on could be interpreted to mean any number. That it's just not based on in that case.
Trustee Dennis?
So my previous comments and clarifications still stand. Um, I guess the question I would have is, is there a, is there a proposed adjustment to the language of the motion? Because I feel like that's kind of what's been suggested here, but I haven't heard that asked. And so if that is something that we need to settle, then I would suggest we do that.
Okay, trustee Vukadinevich, are you looking to propose an amendment?
I'm not the one bringing forward the amendment. Um, it is trustee Dennis, but I do wish for it to be accurate. And it, it, we can't just have words in an amendment that are not based on.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess and return. Thank you. Okay, we'll reconvene. Um, okay, so with that, the proposed amendments on the floor are to delete uh, four point seven five percent, replace it with three percent, and delete the $2,217 and replace it with $1,402. Trustee Dennis, would you please open debate on the proposed amendments?
I will. Thank you, Chair. Um, so I am supportive of trustees receiving an increase in the base honoraria. However, I am quite reluctant to have that increase set at four point seven five percent and for a few different reasons. Uh, three percent is not only sufficient, it also still serves to align us more closely with our comparators. Considering other adjustments recommended in our overall compensation, which we will contemplate next. So I'm considering that as well. Um, we already received a modest increase last year and an additional three percent seems reasonable to me. And because of increases and the length of time other staff have had to wait for an increase, I'm asking my colleagues to support this amendment to reflect a three percent increase in our base honoraria.
Trustees for round one of debate? Trustee Vukadinevich?
So I'm inclined to vote against the amendment. Uh, the original proposed, uh, proposed motion uh, presents a modest increase when placed in the context of the fact that trustee remuneration has hardly budged over the past fifteen years ago, fifteen years. Fifteen years ago in 2009, trustee remuneration was set at $46,618. Today, it is $46,730. That is an increase of $112 over the past fifteen years. In other words, over the past fifteen years, the remuneration of CBE trustees has increased by less than one percent. It has increased by point, zero point two four percent, which means that it increased by less than a quarter of one percent. I don't know of any other CBE position in this organization where the staff members have received an increase of $112 since 2009. And inflation has increased a whole lot more than one quarter of one percent in the past fifteen years. If you look at statistics around inflation, you can find that due to inflation, a basket of goods and services that we could buy in Alberta for $100 would cost $130 today. In what, in other words, we've seen a thirty percent inflation rate from 2009 to 2024 based on an annual average inflation rate of two percent. Clearly trustee remuneration increases have not come anywhere close to the inflation rate. Um, the other reason too why I will be voting against the, this amended motion is that uh, it is not based on the three-year CPI rolling average. And it, it, it shouldn't include that language if it isn't. That, that number is meant to be an anchor. We certainly never have to agree to increase trustee remuneration in, in line with the three-year rolling average of the Consumer Price Index in Calgary. Uh, but, and in fact, over fifteen years, we have only ever once trustees, the Board of Trustees has only ever once in fifteen years voted to increase uh, the, the trustee remuneration in line with the three-year rolling average of the CPI in Calgary. So we don't have to do it, but if we're, I just think that we should be honest and clear that either we are increasing it in line with that number or we're not. It's still a fair point to decide not to increase it in line with that. But then we can't say that it's being increased in line with the, the average. That is a precise number. We know what that precise number is. So we either are or we aren't. So those are my two reasons for voting against. One, that I feel that an increase because trustee remuneration has increased by only $112 since 2009 because successive boards of trustees are too nervous to, to um, vote in favor of an increase. Um, I think that the, the original motion presents a modest increase and also I'm concerned.
Apologies. Hi, three minutes, you can enter for round two if you wish. Any other trustees for round one of debate? Trustee May?
I appreciate this amendment. I know that the three-year rolling CPI was used as an anchor determiner increase in policy, uh, which is why we increased it to that number last year. Um, but just year to year, I think a four point seven five just seems quite high in the context. I know inflation and cost of living has gone up, but the three percent I think is just sits a little bit better personally. Um, and I'm not as concerned about the language. And I feel that, you know, there is an opportunity to make an amendment to the amendment if, if that's a sticking point.
Trustees for round one? Trustee Close, go ahead.
I might ramble, but I'll try not to. I'm, I'm curious about this amendment and leaning towards supporting it uh, because of, because of what you've shared in your opening. And also because of what trustee Vukadinevich has shared in not supporting it. Because it's starting to make me think that two things are going through my mind. One is, um, we're comparing ourselves to other metro boards. But I don't necessarily have the comfort that that comparison is accurate or valid or necessary. Um, and it's just more from a philosophical approach to uh, having a conversation of what remuneration looks like. And then the other comment that's, that's percolating in my head is for fifteen years, um, well, it's probably been longer than that, uh, that trustees have not accepted a remuneration. Um, in my experience, uh, the first time we considered uh, remuneration other than $16,000, which was almost like an honorarium at the time, it was, we were talking about having um, a salary or a remuneration because that was half of what counselors were paid. And then, so there was a lot of conversation years ago around workload and the amount of work that we did. So I think, um, I think I'm compelled to support the reduction to three percent um, just because of the context of, of what trustee Dennis has, has uh, shared. It's obviously an interesting conversation for us to have every year. And it's been an interesting conversation for successive boards. Um, I think what I want to maul about um, going forward is, is what remuneration looks like for governance, period, and what the role looks like uh, going forward. But thank you for bringing forward the amendment and, and thank you for bringing forward the, the reasons not to support it and the reasons to support it.
Any other trustees for round one? Trustee Downey?
Um, just a point of information to offer that the comparison of uh, Calgary Board of Trustees remuneration to the metro school boards was approved by this Board of Trustees. Um, it's very solid practice in compensation and benefits to, and, and necessary. It is valid, accurate, and necessary to anchor our data within a peer group, which we have done. So trustees did approve a very small increase last year based on the three-year rolling CPI, which is currently in policy as an option for compensation increases. The three-year rolling CPI is a variable number, and this year it is higher than in past years. I can understand why trustees may be concerned about an increase of four point seven five in relation to the optics of that number alone. However, it is important to look at this number in relation to all compensation data of the CBE and its peer groups. The other metro school boards in Alberta. I believe that the recommendation of four point seven five percent is reasonable because if accepted, CBE trustees will still not be paid the highest uh, in Alberta despite being the largest board with the most students and schools in Western Canada. In comparison to other employee groups, four point seven five percent may seem high. However, one must consider the lack of incremental increases over nearly a decade. However, one must consider the lack of incremental increases over nearly a decade for CBE trustees. If trustees continue to undervalue their position, attraction and retention will be more and more difficult in this role. An increase of 4.75% would position CBE trustees firmly within the data of our peer group. It would not make us the highest-paid trustees or the lowest-paid trustees in Alberta. And this is a reflection of compensation best practices. And some additional information, since 2021, the Calgary City Council has increased their remuneration by 6.4% in the same amount of time that this board has been in office.
Trustees for round one. Moving to round two, any trustees wishing to enter or re-enter debate? Trustee Vukadinevich?
I wholeheartedly support what the Chair of the Remuneration Committee, Chair Dana Downey said. Her words eloquently captured every aspect of why I will be voting the way I will be voting today. And I just wanted to underline that one of the things that we do as governors is we manage risk and I'm concerned about risk to the CBE. If we don't increase trustee remuneration in line with the growth of everything else, the number of students, the number of schools, the number of parents, the number of constituents in our wards. The Board of Trustees provides oversight of an organization with a $1.4 billion operating budget and it is crucial to attract candidates with a wide variety of expertise, financial expertise, governance training, and board experience. Being an elected school board trustee, as you know, is a unique but special role in a community. We have to be available to meet during regular daytime business hours to accommodate the schedules of the CBE's 15,000 staff members. We have to be able to, available to meet during evenings and weekends to accommodate the schedules of parents, guardians, and community members. We have to be available to be called for emergency meetings on statutory holidays. And we have to balance our roles as trustees of the system along our roles as elected representatives. If trustee remuneration does not increase in line with increases that are happening everywhere else, there's a risk that fewer highly qualified candidates will be interested in running. And we owe it as governors of the system to make this a role that will attract highly qualified Calgarians and make, and and we need to do our best to try to keep this an attractive role for people who bring a wide variety of experiences.
Trustees for round two. Trustee Downey?
In consideration of a percentage increase to base honoraria, trustees should consider that some of the other metro boards use a per diem pay structure to receive valuable, to receive additional pay as well as receiving a valuable benefits package. CBE trustees do not have either of these structures to increase their pay or increase the value of this role for trustees. So making a 4.75% increase to base honoraria is all the more reasonable. For these reasons, as well as those I have previously mentioned, I will not be supporting this amendment.
Trustees for round two.
I will take my turn here then. Just in listening to the debate, and I think there's a lot of really valid concerns and questions and reasons for and against. I think where my head is at, at this point, is I will be voting against the amendment just because what we would then see with the motion that was brought forward and that percentage, that percentage is coming from a committee of experts in compensation rather than us coming up with a number and justifying it, if that makes sense. So just in relation to that, I'm gonna, I want to hear, I'm looking forward to debate on the motion itself that is coming forward from the committee.
Any other trustees for round two? Trustee Dennis, do you wish to close?
Yes, I would, Chair. Thank you so much. First of all, I want to just offer words of appreciation to trustees Vukadinevich and Close for their historical perspective on trustee remuneration. I appreciated those comments. Also, I would like to just acknowledge my gratefulness for the work of our Remuneration Committee and in particular, the external experts that we have on that committee. Their professional insight and expertise are valuable and certainly provides an important perspective when considering overall remuneration for this position. What I would note is that trusteeship is not a career. And so this is a public service that we perform. And we are elected and there's no guarantee that this position will last longer than the election cycle, than a four-year cycle for us. You know, yet it is a public service, that it is reasonable to anticipate that we would be, you know, reasonably compensated for what the role is. And again, this is a temporary, it is a temporary position. And it can be closer to full-time, it can also be very part-time. And so I feel that our compensation, the way it sits, and especially considering the other recommendations that have come from the committee, I still believe that a 3% is reasonable and fair and frankly, easily justifiable. I feel as though I could have a conversation with anyone and justify a 3% increase, especially when we consider some of the other adjustments that the committee is recommending to our remuneration package. And the board has not always supported recommendations coming from the committee and other trustees have made that clear today. It is true, we have not always supported the recommendations, but it's because we have multiple factors to consider when making decisions. And I've outlined a few of the factors that I think are important to consider in this decision in particular, and I would look to my colleagues to support this amendment.
With that, I'll call the question, those in favor of the amendments? That is trustee Close, trustee Bolger, trustee Dennis, trustee May, those opposed? That is trustee Vukadinevich, trustee Downey, trustee Hack, that is carried. Okay, we'll now go back to the main motion. For clarity, the main motion as amended on the floor for the board's consideration is that the Board of Trustees approves an increase to trustee honoraria effective September 1st, 2024, of 3% or $1,402 based on the most recent three-year rolling average of Statistics Canada, annual published Calgary Consumer Price Index. Trustee Downey, would you please open debate?
Thank you, trustee Hack. Chair Hack, rather. Well, this is not the motion that I'd hoped to support today. The Board of Trustees has decided to make an amendment and by accepting an increase at all, the board has taken a step toward both market and peer group data alignment.
Trustees for round one of debate. Trustee Vukadinevich, go ahead.
Remuneration systems that reward fairly accomplish several things for an organization. They send a positive message about an organization's values. And the message I'm hearing today is that negative one about that we're sending. They increase efficiency and productivity by attracting the best candidates. And I'm nervous for the future of the CBE because at the rate at which we increase remuneration, far below the rate of inflation and far below our peer groups, other trustees and other school boards that are smaller than ours, we risk not being able to attract the best candidates. Remuneration systems that reward fairly also increase cost effectiveness by reducing absence and early resignation. So I'm worried that we've put ourselves at risk there. And remuneration systems that reward fairly are part of, a key part of an organization's corporate social responsibility. As a working woman, I value the contribution that I have to society and I want to be part of an organization that values the contributions to women by providing remuneration that is evidence-based, fiscally prudent, and that demonstrates an accountability for the expenditure of public funds. The original motion did that. This one does not, so I, I know, I don't think I can vote.
Sorry, point of order. Trustee Vukadinevich, reminder that we're voting on the motion as amended. We're not voting on the, or debating the amendment again. Thank you.
Well, the motion as presented...
You can continue debate, but just refocus on the motion before.
The motion as presented before us is not one I can support because it is not in line with the three-year CPI rolling average, which is what our external experts had recommended.
Trustees for round one. We'll move to round two. Trustees wishing to enter or re-enter debate for round two? Trustee Bolger, go ahead.
Thanks very much. I'll be voting in support of this motion. It helps to bring CBE trustees in closer alignment with our peer group of Metro School Board colleagues, which is Edmonton Public and Catholic and Calgary Catholic, even though we are significantly larger and in one case have fewer trustees serving. Knowing that the trustee remuneration committee is comprised of external community members and experts and that a comprehensive review has been completed in comparing the metros, I think the information before us is strong and it doesn't make us an outlier in any regard. In addition, when taken into account the other recommendations or adjustments noted in the report, supports this has been a reasonable increase. Thank you.
Trustees for round two. Trustee Vukadinevich, go ahead.
I'm not feeling very valued right now, so I will be voting against the motion.
I'll enter for round two here. So in listening to previous and now, when making a decision like this, even a 3%, can't be done in a silo. Just two weeks ago, we took a look at our budget assumptions report. We know things are extremely thin going into next year. We as a system didn't see funds accounting for growth and inflation and just looking at the way that's positioned and then talking about giving ourselves any type of raise, I have concerns there, but I do value the work that trustees do. We do want to attract qualified and quality candidates. And I will, I will speak for myself that I make this a full-time job. I treat it as such. I want people who are willing to run, who can do the due diligence in relation to this public service. I don't think that they're opposing values. But if we think about it in just these terms, I'm struggling between, and the conflict between the two that we've got to take in the context of the CBE budget. We're also trying to take it in context of, we do want people who take this role seriously and can fulfill the duty here. So I'm gonna think about that because I haven't decided yet.
Any other trustees for round two debate? Trustee Downey, do you wish to close?
Nothing further to add, Chair.
Okay, with that, I'll call the question, those in favor of the motion? That is trustee Close, trustee Bolger, trustee Dennis, trustee Downey, trustee May, those opposed? That is trustee Vukadinevich, trustee Hack, that is carried. Are there any additional motions regarding this report? Trustee Downey?
I just need a few minutes, please, Chair. Thank you for your patience. That the Board of Trustees approves the amendments to governance culture 2E trustee remuneration, attachment 1 to this report, effective September 1st, 2024.
For clarity purposes, as a result of the previously passed motion on trustee honoraria, attachment 1 is amended to reflect the honorary in section A1 as 48,132 instead of 48,947. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? Okay, the motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the amendments to governance culture 2E trustee remuneration, attachment 1 to this report, effective September 1, 2024. Trustee Downey, would you please open debate?
Thank you, Chair Hack. I think a lot has been said about the recommendations of trustee remuneration committee. I just reiterate that these are all reasonable recommendations and would ask my colleagues to support in approving the amendments to the governance culture policy to reflect these recommendations.
Trustees for round one of debate. Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Again, would like to express my appreciation for the committee, for the recommendations. And there are, there are a few components of this adjustment that I'm quite excited about for us all. And in particular, like to highlight the increase to our personal PD budget. Our administration provides excellent PD to the board through our board development sessions and also via the very thorough onboarding that the board receives once we are elected. All of that PD that is provided to us are tremendously relevant and certainly support us in the best ways to understand the system, be able to perform our duties to the best of our ability. But what I would say over the years, that I've been a trustee, I have not accessed very much of my personal PD budget and it's simply because the offerings that I felt would be most relevant to my role outside of the organization would just not be covered by the PD allowance that was provided. And so really up until the trustee governance program developed by the Alberta School Boards Association in conjunction with the University of Calgary, there wasn't really a lot of other options that trustees could access and have the cost covered by their PD budget. And it is sometimes difficult to find PD specific to school board governance. And with this increase in personal... And with this increase in personal PD, I'm really hopeful for myself and my colleagues that we will be able to access PD outside of the organization. And for example, things like the Canadian School Boards Association Congress or even the National School Boards Association Conference, where the learning is designed specifically for school board trustees. So I'm happy to support this motion.
Trustees for round one?
I'll I'll enter here and say that I'm probably leaning against voting, voting against this motion as well. Again, I think knowing how many cuts are going to be seen within our schools this year especially, I don't think it's prudent to be to be increasing what we're receiving, whether it be compensation, whether it be professional development. We know that things are being thin in the school, and this year especially, I'm really struggling with taking more at the top versus allowing it to to flow as much as schools. I understand it's a small amount, but to me, that's that's a gesture when we're seeing so much going on in schools. And this decision isn't in a silo, so that's that's where my head is at at the moment.
Trustee Vukadinevich, go ahead.
I will be voting in favor of the motion for the reasons that trustee Downey, as Chair of this committee that worked so hard, outlined earlier. I will just add that if trustees are interested in making gestures, the CBE has a fundraising organization called Education Matters. And I highly encourage trustees who are interested in making gestures as as their own personal decisions to donate the amount of any increases received today in full to Education Matters. In fact, it's a challenge that I set forth for all Calgarians. It'd be wonderful to see all Calgarians make a donation today to Education Matters as a as a portion of their earnings this year. So for trustees who are who have that concern, there is that avenue for them to personally be able to make a gesture.
Trustees for round one? We'll move to round two, trustees wishing to enter or re-enter. Trustee Downey, do you wish to close?
Thank you, Chair Hack. Pardon me. I just wish to reiterate that these potential amendments all represent incredibly reasonable numbers which have been mulled over and looked at upside down and sideways. The increases that we're talking about throughout the policy are very small, and they offer a chance for the CBE Board of Trustees to become much better aligned with the peer groups that we are a part of. If the board rejects these amendments, it does make it more difficult for future boards to make changes to this policy because the CBE Board of Trustees becomes that much further behind in the comparator data. So I would urge my fellow trustees to support these amendments.
With that, I'll call the question, those in favor of the motion? That is trustee Close, trustee Vukadinevich, trustee Bolger, trustee Dennis, trustee Downey, those opposed? That is trustee May, trustee Hack, that is carried. This brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. All items not removed from the consent agenda will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. This concludes the public portion of today's agenda. The board has two legal, two labor, two land, and eight strategic planning matters to deal with in private. I'd like to thank all of you who have joined us for this meeting. Our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024.